Welcome to Ames District Board Meeting today. Today, we will start our meeting with the swearing in of our new trustee, Jerry Harvey, our board liaison will do that duty.
Ready to take the oath?
I am.
If you will please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cristobal Garcia, do solemnly swear.
I, Cristobal Garcia, do solemnly swear.
To faithfully perform the duties.
To faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of District E, Board of Trustees Member.
To perform, sorry.
Of the Office.
Of the Office of District E, Board of Trustees Member.
Of the Ames College District as required by law.
Of the Ames College District as required by law.
And to support the Constitution of the United States.
And to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris. We're glad to have you be joining the board. Jerry, thank you. There was a signing of a Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics, and a conflict of interest during this swearing in, so thank you. With that, I love to do it again. We will call the board meeting to order on Wednesday, August 13th at 1:32. And if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dive right in. The first up is the approval of the agenda. If I could have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hare. Thank you, Trustee Trusswell. All those in favor say aye. Great, thank you. We do have a rather lengthy consent agenda, and I will run through that. We have the minutes of the May 7th, 2025 District Board Meeting, the minutes of the June 3rd, 2025 District Board Retreat, the minutes of June 3rd, 2025 District Special Board Meeting, D, the minutes of July 2nd, 2025 District Special Board Meeting, and E, our minutes of the August 4th, 2025 District Board Retreat. And I would entertain a motion to approve. Approve? Thank you, Trustee Wendell.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Trusswell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment: The Board of Trustees encourages the general public to provide comments directly related to business and operations of the college. Zach, are there any comments? Great, okay. Thank you. Next up, we have our presentation from guests and representatives to the board. First up, we will have Kelly Jackson, our Executive Director of Foundation, to present Excellence at Ames.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein, all of our friends and colleagues in the audience. Have you ever watched one of those Facebook reels where they have the impossible jobs? And you don't know what you're looking at going, holy cow, who would do that? We have a student who is going to sign in for one of those impossible jobs, and her journey started right here at Ames. Today, I get to introduce Ryland Ray Enriquez, a 2025 welding technology graduate who earned a prestigious spot in an elite underwater welding program backed by an employer sponsorship and a future job offer, making an extraordinary achievement in one of the industry's most demanding and specialized fields. So today, let's welcome Ryland to share her Ames story.
Thank you. As said, my name is Ryland Ray Enriquez, and it is such an honor to speak here today. Driving in today was extremely memorable. I was first introduced to Ames Community College my sophomore year of high school when I began to think about my post-secondary career goals. My goal was to gain enough college credits to graduate high school with little to no need of taking general education classes in college and to focus on only my degree. I took as many concurrent enrollment classes that Ames offered at my high school, and this past June, I completed my Associate of Applied Sciences in Welding Technology with the need of only completing one general education class during my final two semesters. Although the development of my career passion started majoritely in my junior year when I was accepted into the Career Academy for Welding Technology. In this academy, I was able to begin certifications for my degree and completed one while I was there. I can remember my class was small and the female demographic was much smaller, but I focused on my classes and excelled in ways I never knew I could. Unfortunately, with a month left of classes, I fractured my knee and was unable to weld for the last month of school. I knew I was passionate when all I wanted to do was come back to the shop and continue welding and continue my classes. Luckily, the Ames staff in the welding building was able to work with me and allowed me to finish my last class that I missed at the end of my summer semester. Summer spots were full at the Greeley Campus, and so I opted to go to the Fort Leptin Campus. And with this commute, I could finish my degree as quickly as I could so I could find a job. Although, as I worked through my degree, I continually developed a passion for a career and continued to challenge myself with each project and always knew I could improve. I realized I wanted to continue this challenge and further continue my education, and that's when I applied to commercial diving school. With three months left of classes, I was accepted into Divers Institute of Technology in Seattle, Washington, where in seven months, I will receive 13 certifications in commercial diving and plan to focus solely on underwater welding. In a world full of welders, 4% are female, and even less are underwater welders. If it wasn't for Ames, I don't think I would have found the passion that I have today and the want to continue my career. I am so thankful for the continuous support and I am shown from my teachers and all staff at Ames. I will always be proud to be an art barque.
Hello, and thank you for being here today and sharing your story. And congratulations are going to be tremendous. We're very, very proud on behalf of the board and everybody that's here. Certainly, it can be a part of Ames, so in your life right here. So thanks to you. Good luck with what you do. It's just wonderful.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a great story. I dive, and I can tell you, I can't even imagine welding with everything else that goes through your head underwater. Anyway, congratulations. We look forward to seeing where you kind of land. So, next up, we have our representatives to the board. Our first up would be our Ames Faculty Association. This is vacant currently, however, the FA has selected a representative, and they will be beginning in September at our board meeting then. So we look forward to that. Next up is Ames Staff Association, Paul Bashlein, who is our new representative.
So good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees and guests. My name is Paul Bashlein, and it's a privilege to address you today as the new president of Ames Staff Association. I want to thank you for the opportunity for your dedicated leadership of our college. I've been a proud member of the Ames community for 11 years. I serve as a full-time recruiter in human resources. My time here has given me a unique perspective for the hard work and dedication of our staff, who are the backbone of this institution. I'm passionate about representing their interests and ensuring their voices contribute to the success of our shared mission. I'm also honored to be working with an outstanding group of individuals on the Staff Association Board. If they're here, they can stand up. Julia Chilcott, our secretary, provides essential support and organization. Whitney Cowling, our representative for the part-time staff. Michelle Burt, our representative for the Windsor campus. Ellie Lemo, who advocates for our Loveland campus, and of course, David Bott, who provides valuable insight as the past president. So we are currently seeking a new representative for Leptin. Julie, are actively working to fill that crucial role. As you're aware from the packet, the past year has been one significant activity for our association. We've worked to build a strong foundation, and I want to extend my sincere thanks to the previous board for their tireless efforts. This year will be no different. We have scheduled our retreat for August 18th, which we planned our entire year. Looking ahead, our primary goal is to ensure that Staff Association continues to be proactive and a collaborative partner in achieving the college's strategic objectives. We are committed to fostering a strong campus culture and supporting policies that empower our staff to do their best work, ultimately benefiting our students and the entire Ames community. Thank you again for this time. I look forward to working with you and if needed, collaborating on the important work that lies ahead. So if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Thank you. We welcome you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have our Student Government Association with Jeff Thatch.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board, Chair Shaw, Dr. B., faculty, staff, and my fellow students. Today, I'd like to spend my time welcoming the incredible group of student leaders who will shape the heartbeat of our campus this year. These students have stepped forward not just to participate in college life, but to actively create it by planning meaningful events, building genuine connections, and ensuring that the student voice is heard loud and clear. We have a diverse and passionate team, each bringing their strengths, perspectives, and commitment to serving the college and its community. I've already seen their dedication in action even before our first events and gatherings of the year. They graciously endured my facilitation of a few certified peer educator training modules, and they've already jumped in to support our upcoming service project at Crispie's Rescue and Rehabilitation. If they stand at this time, I'd like to recognize them. And when I call your name, if you're here, please raise your hand, give a wave, or do a little twirl, something. All right. Our Campus Activities Programming Board programmers are for the Fort Leptin Campus, Adriana Castilla. I don't actually think any of CAP or ARK are here, so it's just going to be the SGA people. Pacific Engagement, we have Aubrey L. Reynolds. Physical Health, Adriana Gutierrez. Sexual Issues, Relationships, and Genderate Education, Cesar Rayano. Windsor Campus, Jessamine Rojas. Mental Health, Rebecca Mercado. And then here's our Student Government. Our Executive Vice President is Mindy Stevens. Our Vice President for Student Affairs, Angelica Floyd. Our Vice President for Academic Affairs, Brian Bernal. And our Vice President for Administrative Services, Sage Rodriguez. Finally, we have our RDI's Recovery Connection Student Facilitators. They are Anna Monsaveus, Tori Lutz, Charlene McCaslin, and Dominic Kenyon. Please join me in welcoming this incredible group. To each of you, leadership is not about titles. It is about the responsibility you take on and the impact you make on others. This year will bring moments that challenge you, inspire you, and remind you why you chose to lead. So as you begin this journey, I will leave you with a line from the wise Doc Brown from Back to the Future. Your future is what you make it, so make it a good one. On behalf of student life, welcome. I, for one, cannot wait to see the future you create. Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, guys.
No, city. Thanks, Jeff. Love all the new energy. Next up, we have, we will start our action items in Section 7. 7A, we will discuss the board priorities for '25, '26. And we had a great retreat day. Chris was actually able to join us after appointment, and we're able to move forward in what our board priorities are. I won't read all of those. They will as we approve them. You'll be able to access those as well. And so, as we discussed, we developed the attached board priorities for '25, '26. Further discussion or amendments are welcome. Are there any amendments?
I have one question. We call it board focus, and everything else is board priorities. Is one and the same, or should?
I can answer that. So that's a great question, Trustee Wendell. The overall document is the board focus for the next three years, but those sub-points are the ones that have been edited year by year are the board priorities. So that's why it's titled that way.
Any other questions or discussion or amendments? Okay. If not, the recommendation is to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. Thank you, Trustee O'Hare. All those in favor say aye. All right. Perfect. Thank you. I'm very excited about the work that has been done on those. Okay, next up, we have 7B, our CEO, President Goals for '25, '26. Dr. Leah Bornstein, CEO and President.
Thank you. Also, at the recent board retreat, we discussed president goals, which are also college goals for '25, '26. And I'd like to present an administrative recommendation to approve those goals. And for the record, the two goals are 80% or higher completion of the '25, '26 Strategic and Tactical Plan Initiatives and increase external relations opportunities for the CEO and President.
So the recommendation is for approval. If I could have a motion to approve?
I move, please.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Trusswell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Next up, we have 7C, which is Revised Policy 11, Trustee Elections and Trustee District Boundaries. Jerry Harvey, our board liaison, will present.
Thank you, Chair Shaw. The proposed revision prohibits, or would prohibit trustees from serving on any other elected public board while they serve on the Ames Board of Trustees. This gap in our policy and procedure came to light during the appointment process earlier this summer. So this restriction is consistent with requirements in other jurisdictions and was reviewed by our legal counsel as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Recommendation, administrative recommendation is to approve, motion to approve the Revision Policy 11, Trustee Elections and Trustee District Boundaries.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Next up is 7D, Revised Policy 13, Trustee Vacancies. Jerry, if you'll present it?
Yes, thank you, Chair Shaw. So this recommendation for a revision is required for consistency based on the approval of the last item. Let's see here. With this action, trustees have the option, which you'll note here in the redline version that you have in your packet, one of two options of how to revise this. And I wanted to provide those two options to the board. Trustees have the option to either declare a trustee seat vacant as soon as somebody accepts a nomination or begins running for another elected office, or waiting to declare that vacancy until someone has won that actual seat and is seated in the new elected office. So there is a difference there in when that person would no longer be allowed to serve on the Ames Board, whether it's just while they're running or after they're actually elected. So certainly would like discussion from the board on that and what their preference is, and then action based on that.
Any discussion or thoughts?
I guess I'm thinking the first only because you could be campaigning for two things then at one time.
That is a potential. That is a potential issue.
Yeah, I think that's very conflicting for the public.
True, and I would say the reason why I'm providing both options to the board is because some jurisdictions have this as a restriction that way, and others have it once they accept. So I don't think there, based on our legal review of this, there's no issue either way. It's just really the preference of the board of whether you would want one of your colleagues still seated on the board while they're running for another office, or if you would want it to be declared vacant at that time.
What other questions?
Yes, my question is, if we know that they're running for another office, then they probably wouldn't be running for this office at the same time. So I guess the only challenge there is if it's like different terms, right? So like if they're halfway through their term here and then running for another office at the same time. So I guess in terms of this board, would you want to lose someone with two years of experience if they don't get that other seat? That's the question.
I think that's a great way to put it as well.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, just to both points really, it depends on what the board prefers from their colleagues, right? I mean, this is ultimately up to you. Would you prefer one of your fellow trustees running for another elected office while they're still seated on this board? If you're comfortable with that, then I would say option two is fine. If you are uncomfortable with that, then you should go with option one.
I feel the option two, where they can run for another office while they're here, but I understand, you know, if they get that office, you know, that they may have to step down. But, you know, some office may come up that really interests them long-term, and they're in their second term here with one year left, or something like that, that they may want to run for another office.
Difficulty behind if somebody is serving on the board, is running, and then you end up with a vacancy on your board, that's where I see this being a little bit higher conflict. Then this board would have to go back and reappoint because you would be too far from the next election cycle. And that's where I see it probably more. I see that as a conflict.
I agree that there's some conflict there. But it seems that we could work around with it. And we run into those conflicts a bit, you know, when somebody leaves a position early or whatever. So I think it's possible to work through that conflict, that particular conflict. And I don't oppose the first option there. I just think that you wouldn't want to stand in the way of somebody that may have gone on to be President of the United States with that new office. Not, I'm not strongly opposed to the first option, but that's my opinion.
Thanks, Steve.
I'm still kind of like the first one better. I think it's cleaner. I just think about the scenarios that could indeed happen. The other thing, I think, you know, that this is only a five-person board. And so, you know, if it was a nine-person board perhaps, and I think that, you know, there could be a number of months that we're with only four or three, and if somebody, something happened with somebody else. So I guess I still go to liking the first option.
Any other questions? It is a hard discussion.
And I would just say, just to clarify as far as for action, I think whatever motion, or whichever way you want to go, it would really just be a motion to either approve option A or option B, or option one, option two for the revision. So if anyone feels like they're leaning one way or the other, that's what the motion would be, either to go with option one for revision or option two.
Just as a point of clarification, I'm reading it again, and it says, "Accepts a nomination, designation, or appointment for another office." Not is running, but accepts.
Correct.
The, so in that instance, then I would agree with you, Janine, and I would go with option one. Because when you accept that designation or appointment, then you would be selecting to move forward in a different direction. This is not saying is running for another office.
I think the reason why I described it that way would be for the more nonpartisan, odd-year elections, where, similar to this board or a city council or whatever else, you're turning in your acceptance of a nomination when you're turning in your petitions and everything else. For partisan positions, like for the State House or the US House, it is more of that process where there's a primary and then a general election, where you're absolutely right. But if somebody were to want to run for city council, their nomination happens once their campaign begins. So it really is, you're nominated as soon as you begin your campaign. So that's why I described it that way.
This is something we can have further discussion.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if you want to think a little bit about that, we can bring it up, or bring it back to the next meeting.
Yes, yeah, and I would clarify also, just as far as timeline, I think the previous action item was more urgent because we're going into this round of paperwork for this election for this board. So I think knowing what we have for the Revision of Policy 11 will get us through that point. So we could certainly wait until September to decide on this policy.
Thank you. Is there?
Would the next step be then making a motion to kind of forward it to the next meeting?
We could table it for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be the cleanest way, if that works for you, Chair Shaw.
I would agree.
I would move to do that.
To table the motion? Okay. Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. I would request, if you have some additional questions, clarifications, please work with Mr. Harvey. Okay? Go ahead, Trustee.
I'm sure if we could almost think through some potential scenarios that would present a conflict of interest.
Absolutely.
You know, so maybe we.
Yep, so if, so if you guys have any, if you want to get those to Jerry, and then Jerry, I think you can probably come up with several ideas for that as well, to be able, for you to take a look at and help formulate where we're at.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, on to Action Item 7E, Revised Procedure 23-01, Naming of College Property. Chuck Jensen, our VP of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair Shaw, members of the board. Dr. Bornstein, you have before you Action Item 7E. This is to Revised Procedure 23-01, Naming of a College Property. The Ames Community College Foundation recommends a revision to this procedure. Kelly and her team, with recent donor and corporate partner conversations and a market analysis, have indicated that requiring 50% of the cost of the fair market value of a building or the, as a sole option, is not feasible for some donors. Through these discussions and market analysis, it was determined an additional option was needed. Through these discussions and market analysis, it was determined an additional option was needed. So what you have before you is a recommendation to revise the procedure to add an option with a guideline for a minimum naming rate of twenty percent of the cost of the new building or fair market value of existing buildings with a ten-year renegotiable time period. So this will provide in the foundation, Kelly and her team, another option of conversations with potential donors of naming buildings. Uh, the fifty percent for permanent naming will still remain in the policy, but this provides another, uh, another parameter for another option to discuss with potential donors for naming of buildings. And the fiscal impact of this, uh, the foundation expects that this will generate, or continue to generate continued interest in the naming of our buildings. And the administrative recommendation from the college is that a motion to approve revisions to procedure twenty-three dash oh one, naming a college property. Uh, stand for questions.
Any questions or discussion from the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I would like to move, um, to approve action item number seventy.
Thanks, Heidi. Is there a second? Thanks, Trustee Truswell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Okay. Next up, we have information items. And Jerry will walk us through our events calendar and upcoming work session.
Thank you, Chair Shawk. Uh, you will see in your, uh, in your packet, the Board of Trustees' calendar of events. This looks slightly different than, uh, the email that I sent out last week in your weekly emails. Uh, because I got a number of, uh, new events right after I published this, so. Um, so those aren't reflected here, but just to go through this list that we have in your packet, um, all of our board meetings listed in there and also the, um, the Board of Trustees' ACCT Leadership Congress, uh, trip in, uh, late October, um, to New Orleans. Um, I, I would say relation to that, um, I've started looking at plane tickets. Uh, there aren't tons of options, so you might start in the next couple of weeks looking at that. Um, and once you reserve your flight, send me that itinerary. Uh, the other event, which is not listed here, but is one of those events that you received in your email last week is for next week's aircraft maintenance ribbon cutting over in Loveland. Uh, I've heard back from Trustee Truswell that she'll be attending, but if you could let me know now who else will be able to attend. Trustee one. That's for the aircraft maintenance ribbon cutting next Tuesday. Okay, that's okay. Um, so Trustee Wendell, I'll get you down for that. And then, um, Trustee Shawk, if you just want to touch base with me after the meeting, after you have time to check, that will work. Onto the annual calendar in your packet, you'll see looking ahead to the September board meeting. Uh, that is one of our, uh, meetings at a different location. So that meeting will be at the Flight Training Center in Loveland. Uh, in our traditional space over there in the hangar. Uh, we have a number of, uh, work session items to go through with annual reports. Um, designation of hearing officers and an update, uh, campus update from the Loveland campus. And that, that, yep, that's it.
Any questions for Jerry? Great, thank you. Um, we have received two pieces of correspondence and I'm not going to read through them, happy to share them broadly, but, um, Delia Hayfley sent a nice thank you note, um, with the honor for John. And our second one is from, uh, the Weld Legacy Foundation with our sponsorship and partnership with them. And so um, very much appreciated for the correspondence. Okay, next up, we have our board elections update with Jerry.
Thank you, Chair Shawk. Uh, as the designated election official, I'm coordinating the election for three board seats in, uh, Weld, Adams, Broomfield, Laramette, Logan and Morgan Counties, which make up the taxing district for Ames Community College. Uh, the seats up for election this November are District C, District D and District E. As a note, uh, for the public, uh, District C and District D are for full four-year terms and District E is for the remainder of Trustee Hayfley's term. So it would be a two-year term that you'd be elected to, to fulfill the rest of Trustee Hayfley's term. Uh, a call for nomination ad, uh, was placed in area newspapers and was published, uh, on or shortly after August sixth. And information is also posted on the Board of Trustees' website. Candidate packets and nomination petitions are available by contacting me in the president's office here on the Greeley Campus. Uh, petitions, um, could begin circulating last week, so August the sixth. Uh, if they completed notice of intent to be a candidate, nomination petitions, acceptance of nomination and authorization and release to conduct a background check uh, are due to me before three PM on August the twenty-ninth. Um, and as a reminder, election day is Tuesday, November the fourth. Have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Next up, we have our CEO President's Report with Dr. Leah Bornstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, uh, we have a number of, uh, monitoring reports and report outs, and as you know, August is usually hefty for us to, uh, get you all focused and get all focused for the coming year. So, um, uh, your patience and thank you for looking at your packets ahead of time. Uh, as Dr. Ailer is on vacation this week, Dr. Speza will be presenting the workforce report. Dr. Speza.
Thank you, President Bornstein. Chair, trustees, colleagues. Uh, very happy to be with you this afternoon to talk about some aspects of workforce development, but underwater welding, that's pretty cool. Opening of the aircraft maintenance, this is also workforce development. So, uh, while my report will focus on parts of workforce development, I certainly want to make sure I consistently say we do a lot of workforce development across the college into our community. So, we've had a pretty good year in some of our areas. Commercial driver's license is a place where you can go in about four weeks, you get trained up to have a life sustaining and family sustaining job. That's not good enough. Martin and Julie and team decided that we should make it, um, really affordable, almost free uh, to our students. And so they received an award that has covered tuition for about thirty-eight students to go through that program this past year. That's definitely something to be really proud of. That's not enough, though. They decided to actually help our community drive these big machines that we have to do, uh, important events with safely. And so we are connected, uh, to our school, school systems, our health environments, and we are training people how to drive buses, how to drive these health units. So we are doing more than just providing for jobs. We are providing for the safety of transportation throughout our community. Uh, the numbers speak for themselves. They have more than doubled, uh, in service in the past year. I'm just making sure you have time to see the really, really cool stuff we do. So another area that's been doing really cool things and one of the highlights here is, so we teach, we have an American Heart Association Training Center. We have over a hundred and fifteen instructors in our service area that Lori and Mary, uh, help coordinate for the community. Um, and we know that a, a number of our community members speak Spanish, so we're now offering this coursework in Spanish. So people can get trained to do what they want to do to be safe, but also what they need to do for some of their jobs. Many people need to have certification in this space to be employable or to stay employed. So we are listening to what our community needs. We have provided over thirty-five hundred certifications in this space this year. They've also worked specifically with employers to give those employers training onsite with them or here, either way. And so there's a list of those different employers that we've been working with directly to provide exactly the kind of training they need. Yeah, we do more. Our Corporate Solutions space, we, was redesigned about a year ago. And this year with our, are, are you all here? Hello, Corporate Solutions people. With our new team, they have, uh, been, they're not fully staffed. And it is the first year that I've been here that they have made a significant revenue. They brought in over six hundred thousand dollars, which means two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of actual revenue for the college. And you can see the seven, uh, state level grants that they worked with those different employers, large employers in our community to provide specific training for those industries. Well, that's still not good enough. Oh, where's my other page? I'm out of order. No, you're out of order. Sorry. I'll do both. I'll do both parts. I'm vamping. I'm going to move forward and then I'll come back. This year, this brand new team is on track to work with fourteen companies to provide for specific training in relation with the state level grants. Probably doubling, uh, what they do. I don't want to put you on the hook for that, but probably doubling. And they're probably going to come back and say, that wasn't good enough. We're going to do more. Let me come back. So in Northern Colorado, we have six sector partnerships, manufacturing, healthcare, et cetera. But we don't have an oil and gas sector partnership. But what pays our bills, Chuck? Oil and gas. So we pay attention to our relationships and what oil and gas needs. And so Erin has been working with a consortium of oil and gas companies to create a culture of leadership and safety training program for them. She's also working with the state to potentially find grant funding to support that work. Um, but we're asking our larger partners that you can solicit on the page to step up and help with some of that funding. Not good enough yet, but we'll get there. One of the new sector partnerships in Northern Colorado is the nonprofit sector. And so Heather and Rena and team, are you guys here?
Hello.
Have developed a training program because, uh, a lot of people get into nonprofit work because of passion and that's great. It's a good start. We actually kind of need to know how to run a business, how to work with a board, how to get money to fund the things you do. And so we've created a full uh, training program for nonprofit leadership to help people get into middle level, senior level and board level work with their boards. Uh, we've had sponsorship from the Well Trust and others to support folks getting that training. And some of the feedback this group got is they want all of this online. So now they're making this completely available online. Not good enough. Almost good enough. We have been working with Alquest 3D, uh, and we now have our own 3D concrete printing curriculum. We have offered a number of courses online, this introduction to 3D concrete printing is fully online. And you might notice that the majority of the people who've taken that course are not local. We are having a national presence in this space. We've also created the fully hands-on components. That would be the next step, the lab courses. And we've had people attend those courses. They came from out of state, so we've driven revenue for our community because they've had to fly here, stay here, eat here, play here and learn here with us. And you can see again, a significant portion of those folks are from out of state. So again, uh, Rena, Heather and team who are working with our Alquest partners have done an amazing job in getting this curriculum to a place where people want to come from all over the country. There's even people from outside the country who have taken the online course. That's not enough. Here's some other highlights from our continuing education team. Working partnerships internally with our early childhood, having new su- not certifications, but programs in professional recovery, dog training. Everybody loves their pets. Medication aid and maintaining relationships with our largest local employers. That's enough. So I want to say thank you to all of our workforce development partners, our teams. They're amazing. This will be my last presentation to you all as I'm retiring on Friday. So it's a bittersweet moment for me. But thank you very much for your attention and I'm happy to answer any questions.
What?
What?
Any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. I'm just amazed what you have the workforce development team have, they've done in the last year. That's amazing. And, um, thank you for everything you've done for Ames and wish you well in the future.
Thank you.
I would just echo my what was what all the way around, right? I mean, this is impressive when we think about the impact that the college is making and you know, around workforce and everything else. So um, this way impressive. And then my other piece is darn. It's been fun having you here.
Thank you.
And I truly appreciated your, uh, professionalism, expertise, knowledge, humor. Humor is probably one of my favorite things, conversation. So, um, you know, we wish you well.
Thank you very much. If you like live music, I am performing at the Boot Grill on Sunday night at six o'clock.
Sunday night at six.
Sunday night at six o'clock, the Boot Grill in Loveland. Come see me.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next monitoring report for the year is High School Programs Report, which I think Dr. Bukowski is going to introduce and then Ray Chad is going to step up and it was, so you have before you, um, this bound book that we get annually and that's what this presentation is about. So Dr. Bukowski.
So I really get the honor of introducing, uh, Ray Chad, who is our Executive Director for High School Programs. And to certainly thank his team for all the hard work that they do um, in our concurrent enrollment space for the college. But also to remind you that as of May nineteenth, High School Programs is now a part of the Student Affairs Division in our Enrollment Management Unit, hence why I'm here and not Academic Affairs. Um, so this is our annual monitoring report for High School Programs. We will touch on the Early College Academy as well, which does still reside in Academic Affairs. Uh, but just to remind everybody, Ray's part of our crew now. We claimed him, so. Um, please, uh, welcome, uh, Ray Chad, who's our Executive Director.
Board of Trustees, Dr. B, Cabinet, colleagues and the Zoomies online, uh, thanks for a few minutes of your time this morning. Or this afternoon, sorry. I always like to just start with this because it's important that there's some language around our programs. Reminder, we go by the term of concurrent enrollment here. You might have heard dual credit or dual enrollment, but concurrent enrollment is sort of our umbrella term, just means high school kid taking a college course for college credit, whether that's at their campus, on our campus, online or some combination thereof. We also have some specialized programs. Early College Academy, which you're going to hear about here in a few minutes, is our fully integrated high school in partnership with D six, just around the corner from our campus. We have our P tech program, which is our pathways in technology, early college program, which is a three-pronged, three-pronged partnership. Industry, Ames Community College, local education providers. We have Career Academy, a really intensive on-campus CTE experience for students. And then we are full participants in our Ascent and T rep. These are state-sponsored CDE programs that help students access some post-secondary opportunities as a part of their high school journey. So we, we participate in both of those programs as well. And Dr. B kind of teased, we have some information we're here to share with you. We're so excited, twenty-five was, twenty-four, twenty-five was such an epic year for us. We had our biggest year by far. I guess our high school students would probably say something to the effect of lock in chat because low-key the High School Programs Office is cooking right now. So with that, uh, we have a couple of things I want to show you. First is your, uh, bound copy that Dr. Bornstein mentioned. This is our annual report that we do. If you want to take a look in there, every district that we work with, every high school that we work with, they are highlighted in here. Uh, their demographics, their program information. If you have questions about are, do we have a partnership with Eaton High School or do we have a partnership with Fort Lupton? Your answers are in there. Um, that information is public, uh, published. We send it to our partners and it'll be live on our website here in the next few weeks. You'll be able to find that on a regular, uh, basis. So it's a nice report that we started to do. The other thing that I provided you all with is a overview snapshot, this other, uh, stapled packet that you have here is the all Ames data. This is the sort of the ten thousand foot view, as you will. And with some new board members on board, I also published the last four years of data there for you too. So if you're curious about the growth over there those years. And a couple of things are important. Up at the top of that sheet, we have our total information, five thousand one hundred and sixty-five students last year participated through our High School Programs Office, forty-four thousand credits, eight hundred degrees in certificates. It's amazing work. We always love to make sure that we're keeping track of our demographic information. Are we serving the students that are representative of the community that we're serving? We want to make sure that these programs don't turn into programs of privilege, but they're programs of equity. So we're always focused on making sure that those demographics match and mirror the communities that we are serving. And on the back of the page, I think this is some of that shock value stuff that's really exciting. But three point six million dollars, that's the amount of money we saved our community by participating in these programs. That's how much our family saves. So we're talking about dollars that are actually making an impact. They're making a direct throughput to our families, three point six million dollars in tuition savings through our High School Programs Office. And down below, um, you're going to hear more about this as the year goes on, really great efforts to increase our matriculation, making sure that students, as they engage with Ames Community College, that they continue with us. Um, last year, so this would be two years ago data, those Last year, so this would be two years ago data, those senior class, twenty-three percent of all those concurrent enrollment students came to Ames to continue the following year. So this is the year they were matriculated as post-high school graduates at our campus. And twenty-three percent, there's some mixed data reviews. That's a pretty darn good number. We're looking to get that number higher. But when you think about that, those are students that decided, hey, these programs are, we got started, we're going to continue through these programs. I want to show you the data just kind of in another viewpoint here because I think it's critical. This is the five-year snapshot of what we've had these last couple of years. And I want to point to two specific spots. Twenty twenty-one, we had two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one students in our high school programs office. If you look at their number now, you know, over five thousand students, which is a big, that's a big jump. But a couple of rows below that, let's look at CTE students. In the year twenty twenty-one, we had seven hundred high school students that were in a career and tech had focused pathway. You zoom ahead to this last year, we had just shy of three thousand students in a CTE-focused pathway in the high school programs office. So when you talk about these initiatives that you're hearing, as Dr. Spaza just talked about workforce initiatives, we talk about this, the big blur that they talk about in the state of Colorado, blurring the lines between K-12 industry and higher education. We talk about talent pipeline management and workforce needs. Our high school programs office is a great throughput on making sure that some of these students are getting those in skills, high-demand trainings to be workforce-ready at the end of their high school graduation years. And so almost three thousand students in CTE is really amazing. And with that, I always like to highlight like one little nugget for you all to take with you each and every year. So this year, I'd like to talk through our P tech programs just briefly. Again, P tech is pathways in technology, early college, high school. It is a three-pronged approach. So you have to have a K-12 partner. We have a couple of great local districts that are participating in this with us. We have, you have to have a higher ed partner, that's us. And then you have to have at least one industry partner that all come to the table and all agree to build a really impactful program for students. Students get mentorship, internship, industry credentials and associate's degree. And they get first-in-line job placement at all of the industry partners upon completion of their P tech programs. And so this is a really high-impact program. And this last year, Ames Community College supported two hundred and seventy-one P tech students across four pathways. And we're super excited that next year we'll be introducing our fifth P tech pathway for students. So that number is going to be just shy of four hundred-ish students this following year that are going to be in one of these really high-impact, high-needs, high-demand fields that are addressing workforce issues here locally in our community, which we're super excited about. Two quick pictures because we're here for the students. That's what it's all about. This is a Pooter High School. This is a P tech pathway. They just had their first graduating class of seniors that were coming through this program. I think there was seventeen-ish with about ten or eleven completing their associate's degree and with a manufacturing focus. So that was really exciting. And this is Silver Creek High School. This is the home of our newest P tech program. This is going to be an information technology cybersecurity pathway. And so a couple of months ago, we had a fun little signing day. So all these are all the incoming freshmen that are, you know, essentially got their acceptance into the P tech program and did a little signing day with Ames as they sort of learned about what this next year was going to have in store with them. So all that to say, I'll be back for some questions, but we also have a really amazing program in the early college academy. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Rosalaw, who's the director, program director of our early college program.
A little on the shorter side. Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. Like Ray said, I'm Dr. Law. And I am the program director at Early College Academy. And I've had the privilege of being in this program for two solid academic years and we're going to start our third. We started on Monday. We had our classes back and yes, we had some technical hiccups, some Chromebook issues. But overall, just the energy and excitement in the building was just great to be back. We have a really good incoming freshman class and I just have gotten so much feedback from our faculty and staff about something's different this year, something's different. So I think I'm doing a good job to pat myself on the back. So a little bit about what early college academy is. So our students are high school students. We are a traditional open enrollment high school in partnership with D six. In November, they fill out an application and really we're looking for a couple of markers, just make sure that they don't have anything like any red flags. But for the most part, we do accept most of the students that apply and make it accessible to everyone. We then embed our college coursework and framework into the four years that the students are with us. So as early as ninth grade, they earn nine college credits that first year. Then sophomore year, they earn twelve more. And then we break down junior and senior year in about twelve credits per semester, all Ames college classes, so that they graduate with sixty credits and an associate of arts degree at the end of it. And we provide everything in-house, which is something that we like to boast is that we have Ames faculty in our building, Ames adjuncts, full-timers, our tutors, our support services. Everything is in the building and we also provide the textbooks, the materials. I want to do index cards for vocabulary, like all of that is provided by us to the students so that it's no cost to our families or our community. This is our breakdown for this year. So we have sixty-five freshmen, eighty-one sophomores, sixty-one juniors and fifty-four seniors. For a total of about two hundred and sixty students in our building this year. And just a little smaller than last year. Last year we were a little over three hundred, but last year's class was our largest that just graduated. So we are really ramping up our enrollment process and our marketing to ideally have about ninety to a hundred freshmen in the upcoming years. So this is a snapshot from our class of twenty twenty-five. They collectively earned five thousand three hundred and eighteen credits that year, like their senior year. A hundred percent of them graduated with their high school diploma and eighty-two percent of them graduated with their associate's degree. So that is kind of on par with what our associate degree completion rate is. Our class was a class of seventy-eight, which was the largest that we've had in most recent years for early college academy. And just some things that we're doing to look forward to. So we are transitioning to hosting our students on the main campus. And so you're going to hear a lot about that. One of the things that I said when I was hired on was that I want our students to have the flexibility to be embedded with Ames. And while we are our own building around the corner, less than a mile away, it becomes sometimes inconvenient to not be able to provide the pathways of like, I want to take programming because that's what I want to take. And so instead of forcing everyone to take programming when only three students want to take it, we want them to come to the main campus and experience that. And we're launching that as early as this semester. So this semester, we have a handful of students that are enrolled in classes here. So they start their day on Mondays and Wednesdays on the main campus. One of them is taking differential equations, Diffie-Q for those in the field. And then goes into intro to programming and then finishes the day at ECA with his sixth and seventh period English, those required classes that he has. Another student is also going to be doing the degree with designation in history. So he starts on our campus in the morning and then is taking history classes here on the main campus. And we're troubleshooting what that looks like. Transportation is a big one. We're working very closely with the district to have a shuttle to go back and forth with, between the two campuses. Maybe eventually we'll be on the main campus. Is there an empty building, empty building anywhere? So that our students can just go across the quad. How cool would it be to have VPE classes at the perk? So just other things that we're kind of rolling off to make sure that the students feel as they are a part of our college. We started a series called Career Cafe and this is bringing the community into our classrooms. So last semester, we had about fifteen employers and we did mock interviews with our students. All fifty slots were filled up and it just gives them more practice. We also had other industry experts come and talk about a career in nursing and what that looks like. So we're trying to make our students learn more about what happens after graduation. And like I said, we're launching the associate of science and the degrees with designation this year. So we already have one declared student into the associate of science. So the same student that's on the main campus. So he will be our first to graduate in May twenty twenty-six with an associate of science degree. And then we'll have the degree with designation student with history. So we are starting to meet with the juniors and seniors so that next semester we'll have more seniors on this campus. And our incoming class during their freshman orientation, we're so excited that in two years I get to go to the main campus. So again, just ways to really embed them into what it's like to be a college student. And research does find that if a student is taking college classes at the college, they actually transition more successfully and are more likely to succeed when they go into a four-year program. And bringing the community into our space. So we are doing open enrollment nights, open houses and just letting everyone know who we are and what we can offer their students and their community. So. Anyone have?
Imagine students having to go to Dr. Law's office, you know, when they're having some struggles. So all right, we'll take some questions about high school programs and early college. Thank you.
I have a question and it strikes me because I have a very highly motivated fifteen-year-old that lives next door is in one of the programs. So you talked about what you do for equity. I don't want to get into the weeds, but what are some of the strategies that you're implementing to assure that we have equity and access to the programs?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think there's quite a few things. Number one is we, the core of our, our work is to make sure that we're delivering high-quality programs, right? We never compromise the quality of our programs, but also finding a ways to get students access with supports in place are really critical. And for many families, I mean, finances are a huge part of that equity barrier, the access barrier, transportation, a lot of those things. And so a lot of our growth, actually, you'll see that a lot of our programming is extensions of Ames Community College providing our programming at their high school locations or at the community, like CTE centers that are local to those districts. So that's kind of one major just hurdle in general. The other thing that happens quite a bit is when you have both institutions, you get the power of both institutions. Our K-12 partners have great resources, right? They have great tools in place, but so does Ames. And when you bring those power of those two things together, that really starts to become a really powerful program. And this last year, I know I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I know you'll be hearing from them later on this year. But our enrollment coaches and our enrollment teams are in our high schools more and more. We've ramped up our advising services. So now we have a whole high school to Ames advising suite of team that are out in the schools and supporting those students. And so I, in some ways, you get the best of both worlds through that process. From my angle, from a programmatic angle, it's really important to have those conversations with our partners. Hey, talk about student success rates. If you notice in our profiles, we provide data on student success rates. We have really important conversations about what that looks like and feels like and what we can do to address those things. So it's a real comprehensive field, but I think the message I would like you to take home is just it's the best of both worlds, right? You get the resources of not only what's happening at the home high school, but you get Ames's resources that go to back that student as well. And I think that's a really powerful combination. Yeah, no problem. And Heidi.
Great presentation. The information is amazing and the growth is phenomenal. So hats off to everyone. What are the four pathways? I know you're starting a fifth, but what are the current four?
Yeah. So the four pathways, we have multiple in manufacturing, which is really exciting. We also have a construction management, construction trades pathway that's happening. That's probably our second biggest program as in that one. We have a biopharmaceutical bioscience one that we've had to kind of make work that has a bio pathway focus. We don't necessarily have a bioscience degree here, but they get a combination of heavy sciences along with some manufacturing that go along with that. And we have, of course, some of our pharmaceutical partners that are in Northern Colorado are the industry partners that are paired with that. And then cybersecurity will be our newest pathway. So yeah, really amazing.
Any other questions or comments? A lot of great work. Thank you. Oh, Jean, sorry.
Just to have a quick question, could you say that most of the students that you're serving with this program are closer to the top of the grading curve? Or are they the more outstanding students? Or what, how would you lay that curve out for the grade point averaging before they enter the program?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a combination of things, right? We certainly want to make sure all, all parties involved, that we want to set up students for success. That's our number one goal, right? So we work closely with our high school partners to make sure that they understand some, some basic benchmarks and maybe some areas in their high school journey where they might become sort of college-ready in their journey. Same thing happens at the early college academy. Our English composition or college algebra is probably not the best ninth-grade freshman class to give to a student who may not have worked through parts of the foundational skills that they have. So I think number one, we want students to be set up for success and our data shows, I mean, we have over a ninety percent completion ninety percent success rate, pass rate for high school students in their college courses. So it's extremely high rate. Also with that though, we have some, we also know for some kids, getting out of a classroom and getting a wrench in their hands or getting a hammer in their hands is a really motivating factor and something that they start to blossom and do there. So we work with our courses in our schools. There are some courses that are a little bit more friendly to a ninth or 10th grade student. A little bit, some other courses have some more technical skills or more foundational skills that we want to make sure students have before they are placed into that course. So the placement in that pathway is a really important piece for us. But really, truly, I mean, concurrent enrollment, the goal is to make it open and available to as many students who want to start their post-secondary experience and workforce journey as possible. So we have ninth graders take courses and then of course, as you see, there's more 10th graders and then mostly 11th and 12th graders are the largest percentage of students that are in these programs as they built up some of those foundational skills. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Landscape. And so knowing that there are other institutions kind of entering the space as well, even like partners right down the street, like UNC or CSU or Front Range. How do you work, I guess, alongside them or differently than them in order to serve some of the same students and maybe some different students?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's a real reality. I think there is a little bit of a, I think our high school parents and high school students are becoming more and more educated when it comes to these opportunities. There's a lot of initiatives, you know, at one point in time, Governor, Governor Polis's number one educational agenda was the growth in these concurrent enrollment and post-secondary opportunities. So I think schools have some pressure from families and they want to introduce more program. I always, when I talk to schools, I share with them, our number one goal is we want to, we're serving the same students and we have the same goal in mind. We want to help them get from point A, point B in their educational journey. And you know, Ames, I, I'm a little biased. We are, I think we're known in the community. I think last year we shared how we have been recognized at the state level and at the national level as a program of excellence. And so I think we're largely regarded as one of the top-tier programs in the state. I think it just takes a moment for anybody to come step foot on our campus to realize the, the facilities, the educational experience, the high-quality programs that we can offer. From there, you know, it's really just working together with our partners to see if we have common goals that can work together. Our, our main focus is Weld and Lammert County, the Northern Colorado region. We've been contacted by schools across the state. Not always it works out, but our, our goal always is to just help, help our high school partners also achieve the goals that they have, serve our community and, and kind of pull the thread together of all those things. You know, we do manufacturing really well. It's a really big job market in Northern Colorado, right? Really important for us to be investing in those programs. And occasionally there's programs that we don't do and that, that's fine too, as schools, a lot of schools love culinary. That's a big, big thing in high school, right? So I think it's really about working together. But for us to just maintain a quality program of excellence and, and really maintain our high quality. And from there, I think it, it works for itself from there. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Say hi, Rosa. We used to work together.
Very good. Thank you so much and well done.
This is also the time of year where we hear from our office of grants. Chuck Jensen is going to offer us the annual grants report.
Chuck.
Thank you, Chair Shock, members of the board. Dr. Bornstein, you have in your packet the report for fiscal year twenty-five, July first to twenty twenty-four and June thirtieth of twenty-five, our annual report on the number of grants that our grants office has administered across the college. And I'll just give a few highlights through here. First of all, I'd like to recognize Cindy Brock, Chris Arnold and Kara Berg in both the grants and business services offices for compiling this information for you. Quick statistics, you know, we have twenty-nine revenue generating grants currently, six partnership grants. And you can see the dollar amounts that we currently have under operation. And I want to highlight a couple of the, couple of the grants within each of the six different categories that we have within the office. And the first one, probably the biggest question in everyone's mind, and there's a student services, support services is our trio grants. There's been a lot of conversation at the federal level of funding for those programs. The good news is we've been re-awarded those grants for five years. The more somber news is that they've only funded the first year from the federal government. So it's going to be a year-by-year decision from the federal government on continuation of funding for both the Trio Classic and the Trio STEM. So exciting that we were renewed for another five-year, because that's a, that's a competitive process. Our programs continue to have really good statistics. And so on the positive side of that equation, we were awarded another five-year grant. And then the funding will be a year-by-year decision and we'll continue to monitor that. Dr. Bukowski and his team, of course, will continue to keep a, a close eye on that from the federal level or what's happening at the U.S. Department of Education as they continue to work through those decisions at the national level. A couple of other highlights I want to, I want to put on is, you know, we have a lot of partnerships with our high schools. As you can see in, in our, in our categories there with collaborative partnerships with Greeley Evans, our P tech as Ray and his team. as Ray and his team have talked about as far as those types of associations with, or I was actually, Nick, talking about our P Tech relationships with our high schools. Nick also talked about our industry training. That's another highlight of the work that our office does with our corporate solutions office on working through all those grants from the state for all that industry's training. So that's always an exciting thing. We continue to feel good about the Perkins funding. That continues to be, looks like it's a solid, solid funding coming from the from the feds to the from the federal government to the state of Colorado and then to Ames Community College. And that, of course, provides upwards to four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars a year in career technical equipment. And that's always been an exciting part to participate in each year. I also want to note that there was one other addition that I wanted to make to this under the scholarship category is we were in partnership with the Denver Foundation. We were awarded a five-year pilot grant program with the Riser Bridge Scholars Program. And this is a program that is a scholarship program directly to students. It awards up to three thousand dollars a year for students in their last year of school. And so once that program is built out and running, we anticipate serving upwards of two hundred fifty students a year with a three thousand dollar scholarship awarded through that, funding from the Denver Foundation to the scholars, Riser Bridge Scholars Program. So, yeah, there's a few highlights. I encourage you to read through the program or the the information there. It's lots of good things that we do around the area and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? It is amazing. Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Also, several times during the year, we have a marketing communications update as well as their year end report. And this is that time of year where we get an update. And so Zach McFarland will be giving that update. Zach.
Chair Shock, Dr. B, members of the board, cabinet, staff, faculty. This is our brand study. So every year, actually, starting this year, we are now working with ID5, who I would consider at this point to be our research partner, on kind of a multi-year study to take a look at our brand, how we're perceived in the community, how much awareness is out in the community, areas of emphasis that we want to prioritize, maybe for messaging and, you know, for all of our marketing and communications initiatives. So what we're, what we're going to be presenting here is our audit results. Cabinet was begging me to showcase the one hundred pages that came back from ID5, but I went with twenty two, twenty three or so. And and I'll kind of just go through an executive summary and then invite Kelly Agnew, our Director of Marketing and Web, to come up and show you a little bit of work that we've been doing on on the student funnel, which we've talked about over time. So really, when we look at the brand audit, what we're looking at doing is, you know, awareness can be a very difficult thing to kind of latch on to, right? Awareness and perception. If you look and and I'll present on this right after this, actually, when we look at our strategic plan, we want to start developing KPIs where we can track these things. And we've essentially gotten there. And again, I'll show that. But really developing KPIs that kind of show us at a moment in time and say, here's where you're at as far as awareness and perception, here's where we need to go. You know, that's kind of the point of this brand, you know, brand audit and surveys that we've done. We worked with a variety of audiences, everything from current students, parents of prospective students, you know, general people in our service area, prospective students, to really kind of gather a lot of this information. And I think you'll see that that we've been provided really robust information that really begins to dictate kind of, you know, the coming years of how we look at, you know, our marketing and communications initiatives in our community. So I'll just kind of go through the executive summary. Brand awareness, students do show a high familiarity of Ames. The general public of public awareness is about fifty one percent. Our engagement on the website increased about five point one percent, which kind of shows, you know, that really our messaging is resonating with the target on the pages. I've talked about that, you know, in this room before. We're a lot less focused on driving just general traffic to the website. We want people, when they get to the website, to be engaged with that content and actually taking action. And so we see with that five per one, five point one percent increase that, you know, that's an indicator that that's happening. Ames is top of mind for students. We do, and you'll see this in a couple of different slides. There's a lot of opportunity for us to look at how we continue to raise awareness throughout the general community. We spend a lot of time on on program-specific marketing and stuff, you know. I mean, again, you'll see this in a slide or two. Really, what does our general marketing look like? Is some is an area of emphasis for us as far as getting more general awareness about Ames? I mean, you've heard it here, even in a couple of these slides, you know, our programs are amazing. We have amazing initiatives. It's kind of marketing's job to make sure that people know about that. And I would like to see that kind of fifty one percent familiarity increase, you know, hopefully significantly. Brand engagement and loyalty trends, you know, really encouraging engagement and loyalty again. You know, this is what I just noted, web traffic overall decreased. I mean, not significantly, but engagement has increased. You know, our web team, our content authors really focus on the quality of content. We're looking at things like videos and student testimonials to put on the website to make sure that people are finding good information when they get there. We actually just would, we really want the right people on the website, which is our number one engagement tool, you know, across marketing and communications. We want the right traffic to get to that website and finding the right information. As nice as it is, as it is to come up and present large overall traffic numbers, it's really not our overall emphasis. It needs to be the right stuff. They do view us favorably. And again, even as there's, you know, increased opportunity for broader awareness across the board, as we continue to hone in on getting the right traffic, you know, then, of course, we do want more of that right traffic. It just has to be, you know, within the the scope of what we want to do. Brand perception across all audiences. They see us as affordable, supportive, community focused. We did have a perception improve year over year related to our quality from thirty to forty one percent. But there is a perception gap in academic prestige and career outcomes. I don't think this is necessarily just us. This is something that most community colleges are going to face. That said, and this will be in a couple of slides as well. We really want to start a pivot and hopefully you'll start seeing that over, you know, messaging changes here over the next few years, this year particularly, from just affordability to quality and and making sure that people know when they come here, right? They're going to get a really, really good valuable education and that that value word is a really good one to use, right? This is a value to students. It's not just affordable. And so we have a lot of opportunity to look at our our marketing and our communications across the board and and start a pivot into that type of language. You know, I think everybody saw and really, you know, we got a lot of feedback on the billboard off two fifty seven that said ninety one percent of students graduate debt free. It's awesome. We get a lot of good positive feedback on that. But that's only a piece of that story, right? That debt free thing is a piece of it. You're not just graduating debt free. You're graduating, I can't say that word, graduating with a very valuable, you know, piece of, you know, a degree from Ames Community College or certification or a trade, right? And really emphasizing that and pushing that throughout our messaging is something that our team is going to be focused quite a big bit on. And probably to me, when I looked at the results of this brand audit, it's probably the most important piece of information we received. There's a lot of good stuff in here, but that's the one where I think we have a lot of opportunity to continue to increase how Ames is perceived across the community. Media and public sentiment up one hundred and eighteen percent year over year. Julia and Natalie on our team have have done an incredible job of not just reacting to news stories and being available for news stories, but they've done a really awesome job in pitching news stories and making sure that when we have, you know, really good things happening at Ames, that we're actually out there, you know, promoting those and making sure that the the media knows what's happening up front and then getting them here. And so we see those results, one hundred and eighteen percent year over year. And then there's a neutral to positive sentiment there, which is, you know, better than the other one, right? And so that's when we start to mitigate issues and stuff is when we have more of a negative sentiment. But we're in a good spot, neutral to positive, lots of coverage of stories and a lot of opportunity to continue to tell that story out in the medium. Marketing reach, thirty three percent of all respondents reported recent exposure to an Ames marketing campaign, which makes us happy because we've really have, you know, kind of upped our marketing spend and we want to continue to do so strategically. And again, an opportunity to increase reach with more general awareness tactics kind of embedded throughout our overall marketing plan. And so that's certainly something that we're going to be looking at. I'll present on this with the the strategic plan line items. It's interesting. It's a net promoter score. This is ultimately what we've decided will be our metric that we want to increase when we're starting to talk about issues of awareness and perception. So the net promoter score can go from negative a hundred to a hundred. There's ways to assess that. And that's really someone's likeliness to recommend, right, your product to someone else, our product being, you know, our institution and our education. You know, Ames students reported a net promoter score of plus sixty. General public reported the net promoter score of plus twenty one, more passive than negative sentiment. And that's something I'm going to talk about in a second, with an overall NPS average of point of, I'm sorry, plus forty nine. The average in higher education is about plus thirty two. We have, we've actually been working with Larry to say for my team, and again, I'm kind of spoiling my next bit on the strategic plan line items. But we're, you know, the Ames students, we're going to push that to the side a little bit and say, that's great. We're going to monitor, we're going to monitor that alongside student affairs. And we're going to kind of focus on, from my team's perspective, marketing and communications. We're going to focus on that general public plus twenty one and we want to continue to move that as close to plus thirty two, right, as we can. And again, you'll see later in my goals, right, we're going to move this year, we want to get that to a plus twenty five and we have a lot of ways to do that. If you, The Power of Moments is a book that we've read here at Ames. He'll he'll talk in that book a little bit about, you know, not necessarily worrying about your biggest advocates and your biggest detractors, but looking at those neutral people, those kind of in the middle people. And that's exactly what, you know, you'll see here, those passive people, you know, really marketing and communicating to them to turn them from passive to positive is one way that we're going to attempt, right, to continue to move the score up and forward. The other thing that that we recognize is our survey numbers themselves are an area of emphasis for us as we continue to do this year over year. We want to continue to raise those survey numbers. Some of the the plus minuses on, you know, reliability on the study and stuff are not where we want them. And we would expect some jumps as we continue to find ways to, you know, interview and survey more and more people. We'll get, you know, a stronger indication of where we're at. So so that's the net promoter score and I will do my best to not just say that over again in a couple of minutes. And I don't know what I'll do for that, but we'll see. Then we're looking at the overall strategic direction. So all that information plus another eighty pages, you know, somewhere in the in the marketing folders. And what we're looking is, we want to elevate the brand awareness, keep it top of mind in the community. You know, really looking at the brand visibility, overall geo-targeted advertising, community event sponsorships, really leveraging those opportunities for us to be out in the community, talking about it. This is also where I'd start putting things like the speaker series, you know, getting a lot of people here on campus, seeing the amazing facilities, being like, oh, I didn't know we had this here. We hear that almost every time we get people on campus. It's like, yeah, this is a pretty cool place. You should come more often, right? And so getting that awareness, promoting our economic impact, we already, you know, look at Ray's numbers. That was really cool, right? And we we want to take a look at economic numbers like that, three point six million dollars, say, hey, we really need to be talking about that and and promoting that. So people have a really good understanding of the impact we have in our community. And then surprising facts, our facility standout programs, obviously, we're going to put a lot of that stuff into the mix. So people start seeing the value and not just the affordability, right? And this is kind of how we do that. Really looking at perception and reality repositioning, I already mentioned this, affordability as a return on investment. Shift the messaging from low cost to value. Look at the return on investment of an Ames credential. Emphasize successful transfer rates, alumni job placements, really showing people that you come here and you have tangible outcomes, right? There are things that come right out of this education, you know, are, you know, the people who go to work right in our community, all of those types of stories. Making sure that people know exactly what they get when they come to Ames, you know, which really is pretty spectacular. And we see that, you know, monthly even in these board meetings. To close the quality perception gap, showcase academic and career excellence, really looking at faculty credentials, student success stories. You know, look at how faculty are really shaping minds, future, you know, career outcomes. If you look on every degree page we have, we're going to actually have a faculty video that highlights the program. We'll have a student testimonial video on on most pages at this point. We've done a pretty Herculean lift on making sure we have all those videos. So, you know, in in some sense, we're positioned really well to do this because we have a lot of that content already in place. Now it comes down to how do we leverage that content a little bit better, a little bit more efficiently to make sure that people are watching and seeing those and not just the people who land on specific degree pages. But really, we have excellent faculty here, right? We have excellence. I mean, my goodness, look at the students who come up. We have an underwater welder. And if you see me on Slack when the students are presenting, I'm typically messaging Julia going, hey, we've got to make sure to touch base with that student and get that story, you know, documented. But look at, look at this underwater welding in low percent. I mean, this is crazy, right? And so how do we continue to let, you know, the community know about those stories and how spectacular our students and our faculty are is a critical area that we will continue to emphasize more? You know, we we support our students immensely. I mean, you know, food trucks and Artie's pantry and stuff, but really making sure that students know that when they get here, that they're going to be supported. I mean, Student Health and Wellness Center, right, is another example of Ames really supporting the students when they get, once they get here on campus. Peer and community testimonials, you know, testimonials from alumni, this is a little bit more external to internal, but just looking at how we can take those people who interact with us. I mean, if you go back, and I'm just thinking about this now, but if you go back to like Nick's report on all of those companies, right, that we're interacting with, what's the harm in having them talk about Ames a little bit, you know? Let's go out and have them kind of, you know, trumpet some of the work that they've done, which really, you know, cyclically only helps that initiative, helps the perception of Ames. And we are working with really, you know, big partners in our community. And so really wanting to take a look at how we leverage, you know, some of those relationships to continue to talk about, you know, to not have to talk about ourselves, but have other, you know, people in the community to talk about us. Just a couple of initiative examples. These are some things that are already in motion that we're kind of excited about and just wanted to highlight really quick. And this is, you know, most of this is right off of the work of of this, you know, audit. We, and this was the brainchild of Hunter Wilson, our Executive Director for Marketing and Communications, and it's pretty exciting. We're looking at an NIL partnership with UNC that we just signed. And so we have four of their college basketball players who have prominent places on the team, you know, starters this year, really good community members with big followings on social media. We signed on with them just about a month ago, right, to have them as a part of the Ames brand. And you think about something like Ames to UNC, bringing them on campus, having them post on social media, having them talk about Ames. Julia is working, you know, on a lot of the creative things on that, like having them over at Artie's Bistro and doing like, what food's the best at Artie's Bistro? They're looking, Terry Anderson and Nikki Smiley and I, Dana Kohler, we're looking at having the players come and do a youth camp here in our perk facility as an opportunity, one, right, to have community members here in our facilities, but is a really cool opportunity to have the perk highlighted in social media, have them posting about it. And so really looking at who's in our community that has a following, that has an audience, that's interesting, that's posting content. How do we, how do we get with them and and have them do that with us, you know? And the NIL stuff, you'll see that's a custom-designed Ames basketball jersey that I I won't wear. It'd be embarrassing, but like, we'll give that to the players and people will know immediately, like, that guy doesn't, that guy doesn't play ball. But we'll, we'll look at giving that to the players. I think we're getting that stuff in in a week and then we meet with them in a week or two and they'll be able to get their gear and they'll start wearing that when they're out in the community and posting on social. And so it's just a cool kind of initiative that kind of continues to expand our reach to different audiences. And again, if you think about UNC specifically, the Ames to UNC program is a natural fit, you know, for that type of messaging. Commercials, right now, we, you know, a couple of years ago, we finished our, not our first commercial, but our most recent commercial. And it really prioritized getting that out there to the to the point where, you know, across all these channels, YouTube, Prime, Trade Desk, cable TV, you know, total of about two point three million, you know, impressions a year on on TV. When you go back to this audit and see what we want to prioritize, especially with value, it's time to refresh that commercial and and kind of push that message out in a in a channel that really does give us a lot of impressions. It's time to kind of go back through the process, recreate that commercial and start talking about value. And so we're looking at doing this in this upcoming year of really just recalibrating that and getting it out there again. This one's exciting to me. I tried to make that spreadsheet small so it didn't overwhelm you. But really looking at growth programs, we're working with Andrea DeCosmo and on her team. And this one, this one's been a long time coming, but really wanting to develop alongside academic affairs criteria in which we say, hey, these are the programs that are ready to grow, right? Like they meet X, Y, and Z criteria. There's not a waiting list for that program. They have interest. There's a market for it. You know, affordability is good, is there industry demand, really then quantifying how many students are currently in the program and setting goals for growth for that program, because we're not going to go from twenty five to fifty in one year, but let's do that kind of incrementally. And this is a significant project that we're kind of beginning here this fall with a kind of a test case, maybe eight to ten programs to say, hey, let's, let's look at which ones need to grow, which ones are good to go. Through this process, you you probably identify programs that maybe have an issue that keeps you from marketing. It's an opportunity to quantify that and start to work right alongside academic affairs to say, hey, what do we want to grow? Let's go grow it and then track it over time to see how we're doing in very specific program, specific marketing. I'm going to take a break. Kelly Agnew is our awesome, uh, Director of Marketing and Web, and, and, uh, her and her team have, have really worked very hard on the student journey. So, you know, and she's going to kind of come up real quick and, and explain, uh, the work that she's done and show you a couple more slides. And then I'll move on. I guess I'm coming back, so we'll go to the next part.
I'm, I'm down a little shorter. Thank you, Zach. Okay, so what I'm here to highlight is our partnership with our colleagues in admissions and the work that we've been doing to, really implement full funnel tracking is what we call it, where we have complete visibility into the student journey from the time that they first submit their interest in a program, all the way through to the time when they apply and enroll. So what's really made this possible is new customer relationship management software that we've been working to implement over the past year. And now we're able to see really the complete picture of the student's journey so that we can better optimize the content that we're providing. The admissions team comes into a meeting with that student really informed about what they need and where they're at, what they're interested in. And really all of this work, um, wraps around kind of the points that Zach was bringing up about how we want to highlight the quality of Ames, the support that we offer, um, and go beyond just affordability. Utilizing these tools and kind of the strategy behind this really is what is going to empower us to do that. So in this example that we pulled together, um, several months ago, we put a landing page on the Ames website for the new AMT program, wanting to collect information from prospective students who might be interested in that program. So we had over a hundred submissions to that form of people who wanted more information. When they submit that form, they instantly get an email notification saying, thanks for your interest, we'll follow up with you when more information is available. And then at the time that we were actually able to open that application, we sent out a follow-up email to those over one hundred prospects, uh, letting them know that it was time to apply. The program is going to be accepting students starting in the spring of twenty-six and looking at applications in the fall. So we already had that full, um, cohort and audience of students there that were ready to get information about the program. We actually had the very first student apply to that program through this campaign. So really just incredible for us to be able to track that throughout that entire cycle. That's something that we've never had before. We've done a lot of work to try to kind of put those pieces together. But now with new systems in place and with great alignment between marketing and admissions, uh, we really just have greater opportunities to make sure that we're providing the right information for those students, that we're pointing them to the resources that they might need. Sending them a nudge when it's time to apply, or they've started their application and they haven't completed it yet. So really nurturing the full life cycle of that student, um, to just be able to better align with them and start building that relationship with them before they even come to Ames, um, to just deliver better results and ensure that they're able to succeed. We get a ton of data with this system, so we can track which emails they've opened, which links they've clicked, which pages they've visited. I know it sounds creepy, um, but it really helps us and, and the teams across the college be able to be informed when they go to those conversations, be able to say, hey, we sent you some information about upcoming deadlines that you need to know about. And making sure that, you know, we're actually seeing how engaged those students are so that we can help them along the, the journey at the right points in time. And that's just an, an example of some more of the data that we have there. So really where we're going this, with this is just continuing to expand and optimize our marketing, make sure that we're spending our budget in the right areas, that we understand where students are coming from. These tools give us amazing tracking into which advertising campaigns these students were exposed to, so that really we're able to make smarter decisions, make sure that we're spending our budget in the right areas, um, and, and optimizing that whole process so that we're being as effective as we possibly can. And we have had several more applications to this program since we pulled these screenshots. So I think I checked this morning and we have like seven or eight applicants so far, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the implementation of Element Four Five One, which is the system they're using, uh, the work we've done with, uh, you know, student affairs. I, I, I think those slides, you know, really begin to highlight how much Ames Community College has grown up even in that, that funnel process, I think is very fair to say. You know, uh, the other option is that people just call and they, and, uh, we'll get back to you, you know, if we do. But, you know, here what you're seeing is a very mature, um, um, system where when students inquire into a program, there's, there's data, there's tracking, and there's information that's sent to them to ensure that they're continuing to matriculate down the funnel. So I know I'm deeply appreciative, uh, of the work Kelly and Tori, I was ever saying, and student affairs and Mark, I'm abdun on this project. You know, I, I really like this phrase, uh, I, I, I wish it was just mine, but it's not. This came from ID five and, and so, and, and some of their summary. You know, but Ames isn't just an affordable higher education option or a great community college, you know, it's a great college period. And I think that really to me stands out as a statement that we need to continue to make, you know, even more clear to this community that this is, there's an immense value here, you know, and, and we, we're going to start moving that, that message beyond just affordability and start, you know, really emphasizing that, and you'll see that, uh, throughout all of our, our marketing and communications materials. So with that, uh, I, I stand for questions and, and, and greatly appreciate the time.
Heidi? Great presentation, like always, Zach. I think you've done a very good job over the years with, um, promoting the affordability. It seems like it's catching on the billboards out there on the highway. I mean, everyone's been talking about it, Fort Leapton, et cetera. And I think your emphasis on prioritizing the ROI is, is, is brilliant. I mean, you've already done the foundation for the affordability. Now it's just the other part. So, and everything takes time, doesn't happen overnight. So I think you're on in your way and you've done a really good job, thank you, Zach, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, June.
I'll just make one comment. Impressive. It's impressive to see those numbers, but it's impressive to, you know, participate around the community and hear the comments about the positive comments about Ames now versus five years ago. It is definitely impressive.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Chris?
I just, I have to agree with all of those things, and I, I love that you're leaning into the high-quality, you know, really, really that value success, like starting the legacy pieces, because I think that those are so important for families to really kind of engage in. And I think that as you continue to, um, look at engaging kind of that general population. I've seen CSU do this really well, where they talk about like the CSU effect and it's their economic impact. I've seen, uh, UNC really lean into their alumni career outcomes and things like that. So I just look forward to see what y'all come up with, um, to see how you continue kind of engaging that general audience and improving that score.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, good, good comments. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna stay here.
Nice job. Do you want to just jump into talking points?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Jerry's handing out some handouts. Uh, we've been talking about this one for a little while, um, as, as you all are, are out in the community, uh, you know, talking about Ames and, uh, people are asking you questions and you're wondering, hey, you know, I'm out in the community talking about Ames, what should I be talking about? So what we've kind of put together here, uh, and the, the, the thought on this is we'll do it monthly and we'll do it here at the board meeting. If there's no changes to current talking points, we'll probably just note that with everybody and, and, and keep the same ones. But we've provided this in, in hard copy. If you want it digitally, um, that's great as well. You'll notice on this one specifically, there's a few QR codes, thank you, Julia, um, that'll link you directly to the webpages associated with this projects, uh, with these projects. But really for, for the Board of Trustees' talking points for the, for August, our first ones here, uh, really what we're looking at, you know, emphasizing across the community, um, are, are construction projects. And I think that's important because, and you've probably already heard, as people are driving down to pretty major thoroughfares here, they start seeing all the gates and, and the dirt moving and stuff, and we want to make sure that, that everybody knows, uh, what that, what those projects are. And so you'll see here listed, you know, I, I, I don't know if I want to read all of them, if you want me to, that's fine, but, uh, you know, they're talking points. Ames and, uh, Workforce Innovation Center, uh, really highlighting when it's set to open. Um, and then this was a comment that came right from the, the, you know, the board, um, retreat, um, and really the purpose of, of that building. There's, you know, uh, two notes there on, on what will be inside of that building, uh, from the incubator space and what we expect out of that, to the high-tech learning opportunities and what we would expect out of that. There's talking points on both of those that hopefully, you know, help, uh, communication of the AWIC, as we know, there's a lot of questions on that. And then again, what it means to students is kind of that fourth, uh, bullet point and, uh, as far as us allowing them to kind of interact in those common spaces. And, um, then the second one is the Student Health and Wellness Center. Uh, there's the opening date on there, uh, the, um, the services that it will be, that it will provide. And then again, a note on our partnership with, um, uh, Sunrise Community Health is there, and there's ways that we can go out and tell people what we're doing. And then the, the, the third one is the Aircraft Maintenance Training Center. Again, opening date, uh, what we're launching, and then I think there's a really interesting note on there, uh, that really speaks to jobs, right? So why are we, uh, emphasizing this program and, and doing this facility? Well, there's, you know, the deficit and shortage of twenty-five thousand jobs, you know, in this field, and that's why this program starts to matter. So, so really we're looking at monthly. If, I, I would also offer, uh, if you're out in the community and people are asking you questions that keep coming up and pinging, certainly give those to Jerry and, and we can, we can reflect those in talking points and adjust these as needed as well. But these are available to you whenever, um, we have a list of other ones, but we'll, we'll kind of do the main ones. We want to prioritize monthly. So, um, again, I, if, if there's any questions on this or comments, that's, uh, I stand to them. Yeah, absolutely.
Big thank you. I, I was trying to think, okay, I know that opens, I'm pretty sure it's fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is great and definitely something that I think will help all of us.
Perfect.
Janine? The one question I think that would help is it is, um, you know, the Student Health and Wellness Center. I absolutely understand and a hundred percent, ten percent behind it and understand why we, you know, are doing that on campus. But that is not only a question I get, but what, you know, what's that? Which one's being built there? But the other thing is, well, now why are they doing that?
Okay.
And I remember originally we also had some, um, like student surveying that was done. And I remember an eighty-six percent, you know, number and all that. If we added that as a bullet point, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, love it. I'll, I'll.
I was thinking, I need to run through all of my past and kind of look at that, but I think that would be helpful.
I'll get with Dr. Bukowski and, and we'll get that bullet structured and we'll get it out to you all.
In other words, I don't think we can assume everyone that I talked to, um, doesn't get some of that.
Well, and I think you bring up.
The benefits of health.
You bring up a good.
To successfully graduating.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And I think you're bringing up a really good point that as we continue to iterate this, the why behind things, as we get the why behind things. Some are more clear than others, right? But, uh, I think we'll, this is good feedback and we'll prioritize maybe a bullet on why that would help you also communicate that. So thank you very much for that.
That would, it would help me succinct, because usually I say, well, do you have fifteen minutes? I'll tell you why. It's absolutely important.
Yeah, love it. Thank you. Yeah.
So great. Thank you.
Any other comments? No, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Zach.
I think I'm coming back, so.
Yeah, you can stay right there if you want. Okay, just another reminder, um, this is August, this is when we set up the year. So there's a lot of what you've just heard, tons of information as usual, awesome information, tons of talking points and also what you just heard, um, in the materials. But we're having Cabinet come up now because August is also the time that we don't go through every single initiative in the strategic plan that we're going to be, um, involved in this coming year, but we do choose some highlights for you that we think, um, uh, you'd be interested in, and those are the ones that we report out on throughout the year to you. Next year, when we have, uh, when you have your retreat in June and we talk about, um, the completion rate of the strategic plan, or it's those initiatives, these initiatives that they're going to talk about, plus all the other ones that we've been doing this year. So these are highlights, um, and they know what they're doing, and I'm just going to hand it over. It looks like Zach's first. Go ahead, Zach.
Hello again. Uh, you know, uh, as a reminder, we're Strategy One. Ames supports learners throughout the recruitment, enrollment, and retention journey by streamlining processes and extending opportunities. The, this is the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, uh, that a lot of, uh, you know, people have worked to kind of build, um, even, you know, early on through auditing and, and getting a lot of information and then building up that SEM plan. My line for this coming year, um, I've, I'm sorry, I already talked about it, but it's Objective A, and then A1, improve and increase prospective student marketing and communications. Increase the general public net promoter score in Ames's service area to twenty-five, and that's based on the baseline metric of twenty-one. And so I, I, I won't reiterate much, but you know, that's what we're working on is looking at all of the ways that we can continue to raise that net promoter score, uh, which shows us not only, um, awareness, but perception and people's inclination to, to recommend Ames to other people. So that's ours line, and then I think, yep, Larry's line.
Hello again. Um, just to kind of reiterate that whole funnel language, A, the, um, excuse me, Objective A kind of sets the tone. And then we go with Objective B with recruiting to the kind of prospect and overall kind of the pool of people that we're pulling from to Objective, uh, Objective C, which is then increasing the enrollment, where we take them from applicant to get them actually signed up from class. And then Objective D, which is then when we get them not only into class, but hopefully successfully out the door and across the graduation stage as well. So it's that kind of full funnel, if you will. So in Objective B, we're working on two things this year. One is, uh, leveraging a Gear Up model to develop a college-for-everyone program for middle schoolers. Two things, one, because I hate acronym, um, it is gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. Gear Up is a national very competitive grant, D six actually has one, um, and we're using that national framework to create a program to, uh, hit our middle schools as a kind of first point of our recruiting. Not necessarily, uh, to say like Ames is the only choice, but the college is for everyone. And that certainly Ames would be gladly, uh, would gladly be your partner in that down the road. But you really kind of inspire more college-going rates among our middle schoolers, which then of course feeds into high school and then eventually to college. Second are various CRM activities to positively impact student recruitment. So everything from, uh, we occasionally get a student that fills out a FAFSA but has not applied to the college. We get students that don't fill out a FAFSA but probably need to. We will also be working, uh, with both, uh, UNC, working with their denied student pool, as well as with D six, with their graduating senior pool, um, to bring them into the CRM to market and recruit to them as well. Um, and so just a number of different activities we're doing this year to kind of really help to stand up more and more in Element Four Five One. In Objective C, we will be implementing a pre-enrollment survey of student need and expectations, um, to determine not only their, uh, what they're here for, whether it's their certificate, a degree, what their long-term plans are, but also if they're identifying, um, upfront some barriers. So if a student says, I may be, um, I, I, I may be subject to some food insecurity, we're making sure that they have information about the pantry. If they say, you know, I have concerns about struggling with my mental health, we're going to tell them about all of our mental health services, our counseling services, things like that, so that we can kind of wrap around those students from the get-go. In Objective D, um, we're continuing our work in the first-year experience by providing training and establishing support systems to basically build out a pilot program that we will implement next year, um, but really bringing for a comprehensive first-year experience that's multi-divisional to our students, um, during their first year. Two is to develop a standardized format for showing program pathways. We'll do that in conjunction with academic affairs. But basically a standardized format for what information we present, how we present it, and, and kind of the why behind we're doing it. And not just the classes to take, the entry-level wages, things like that, but a more comprehensive look there. And then lastly, implementation of our new Ames model, which is an advising case management model rooted in, uh, appreciative inquiry and appreciative advising specifically. That stands for Arrival Intention Momentum and Success. That spells out Ames, but you can't guess how we did that. But it will ensure that we are moving, uh, rapidly toward providing that kind of trio level of service to all of our students at the college. And, uh, really, it's a lot of intentionality behind what we do in the advising realm, um, shifting from, here's the classes to take, but more of a kind of coach role to help aid in that student's success along their journey at Ames. And, uh, there's one more that's number four, but I'm going to let Chuck talk about that.
I'll, I'll think I'll, I'll address all the construction projects. Just real quickly, Zach and his team, of course, have done an excellent job of lining that out for you on all three of the major projects, AWIC, the Health Center, and the Aircraft Maintenance. So I won't, I won't repeat that information, the dates for opening and stuff as such. The only thing I do want to add is that at the September meeting, uh, Mike Millsaps, uh, and his team will be presenting our semi-annual facilities plan update. So we'll get into a. So we'll get into a, a lot more detail on our overall facility plan across all of our campuses and all of our projects. So we'll, um, save that information for September. But Zach and his team did an excellent job on these talking points for these three major projects.
Yes, I'm not Dr. Ailer. Dr. Ailer's on vacation, so unfortunately you have to deal with me again for a moment. I'll be brief though. Higher education is changing. Uh, as Dr. Rothmer was sharing, technology changes that will be useful for us. We are being asked to create things that look like digital credentials. Things that look like competency-based programs. Uh, and thanks to Dean Vernon, I have some updates in the digital badging space. We have drafted a vision and philosophy to get a start. We have gone through a request for information process for platform selection. We've identified three potential platforms and the good news is we already have two of them in-house. We are working on the policies and procedures draft for what these digital badges will be and look like. And we have a pilot of two potential programs. Our Continuing Education Program would be easy to work with and our Faculty Teaching and Learning Center. The Competency-Based Education Group is also working, but they're still in their research phase. So there'll be more information to come on that soon. Thank you.
Good afternoon, trustees. Um, our goal in Employee Services this year is to work on a couple of tactics. One, that includes enhancing our mandatory, uh, training and our onboarding, uh, programs. I think I felt the earth shake when I said mandatory training. I think a lot of moans and groans out there. But unfortunately, it is a reality, uh, for us, uh, to provide mandatory training for all of our, uh, employees. Over the last years, we've received many more, uh, requirements for mandatory training. So our goal is to figure out how to, uh, provide that information to all employees in a, um, intentional manner to where they retain that information. It makes their jobs easier and they're more successful, uh, in the work that they do. So we, we'll be working on that. We'll also be working on our new employee onboarding program. Uh, we do that in two ways. One is our new employee orientation when employees start. And then also we conduct a semi-annual, uh, AIMS Insider Experience Program. Uh, it's an opportunity for us to show new employees about things they might not hear about in their day-to-day, uh, operations and they get to hear from a, a lot of great folks from across the college about what's happening across the college. So that, those are our goals for this year.
And I'll talk a little bit about accessibility. We've been working really hard to meet the guidelines for accessibility for all of our documents, all of our electronic documents, everything that's in D2L. And Dr. DeCosmo and Brianna Switch have been coordinating what that looks like. And we have Mike.
Ooh.
Orbs as our expert consultant, uh, to help us make sure we understand what we're doing and provide resources. We've done trainings through the FTLC, through programs. We are working as hard and fast as humanly possible to make sure all of our documents meet those standards and we are ready for classes to rock and roll next week.
That's all of them. We stand for questions.
Okay.
All of Cabinet stand for questions.
Any questions, any discussion, comments?
They have a lot to do. As per usual, uh, December, January-ish, uh, that will be your, uh, mid-year report on those initiatives that would, were just highlighted. And then, um, next year, June 26th at your retreat, you'll hear the conclusion of this last year of completion. That's, now you know what we'll be focusing on, along with many others, over the course of the year. Thank you all. And you saw Dr. Rothmer sitting there. That doesn't mean he's not doing anything. You, you heard the work session on campus lens. In your packet under President's Report, you also have written reports from different divisions. If you have any questions for our Cabinet members on those, now would be the time. And while you're thinking of that, if there are supervisors in the audience that have new employees that you would like to briefly introduce, please come on up, um, to the wall, line up to the wall by the, uh, flags and you can introduce your new employee.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Miranda McFarling. I work in the HR office. And I would like to introduce two new employees that we have. We have Jan and Iver, Carolyn Mackey. Uh, they actually started back in June and they will be the friendly faces you see when you walk into the Employee Services Department.
Good afternoon. John Foltz from Campus Safety and Security. Introduce one of our Patrol Specialists, Carl Waldeck. Carl is actually a graduate of AIMS from the Criminal Justice Program. And the last two years, he was actually the supervisor for the contracted security on the campus. So this is Carl.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a while since I've been up here, but I want to introduce, um, our new Director of the Fire Science and Technology Program, Gary Gula. He comes from Champaign, Illinois with over 35 years' experience in the fire industry. Uh, we're super excited about having him as part of our family here at AIMS and over at the Public Safety Institute. He's got some big shoes to fill with Chief John McDougall retiring after nine years. So let's welcome Gary to the AIMS family.
Good afternoon. I'm the Dean of Public Safety, Education and Transportation, and I have the great honor introducing to you our newest member. He is our Director of Automotive, Dell Campbell. With over 35 years in industry, Dell has a wealth of experience. Starting with as an independent technician and rising through the ranks to a 28-year career in management in GM. His leadership experience includes being a Zone Service Manager for 147 dealerships across 11 states, where he directly managed 18 members. He currently commutes 1.5 hours each way from Deer Trail, believe that's east of, um, Denver. So him and his wife, Leona, are in the process of moving closer to the campuses. And so they're looking for property with space for their 20 chickens. So if you know of any suitable land, Dell will be standing back there waiting for you. So thank you. Welcome, Dell.
Welcome, everyone. I look forward to meeting you and learning more about, um, your, uh, Dell, your chickens for sure. And that concludes the President's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein. Well, we're reaching the end of the meeting and we always take a moment to, um, self-assess and we value our accountability. So I wanted to throw it out. Do any of the trustees have comments, takeaways, things get, be improved? I know we've talked a little bit about meeting times and so I'm going to throw it out to the board for comments around the breadth of that.
Just as a, a new member of the Board of Trustees, uh, as a full-time employed person, it can be difficult to take, um, a full day off from work, um, even once a month. And so, um, I just wanted to share that as a challenge that I have, um, and open that up for discussion.
Heidi?
Chris, I had heard about this and I thought, wow, it's always been this way. What a great thought. I mean, it's, it's a totally different idea. And I work full-time. I own my own business, so I can, but totally understand. So I'm, I'm totally flexible for new, new times for sure.
And I voice as well, being a full-time, um, on some of the challenges as well. And so I want to present it out to the group of, um, potentially, we talked a little bit about possibly, um, putting it a little bit later in the days, keeping the same day. So our schedule is on. But wanted to throw that out for any feedback, working through that, what that looks like. I think also a sensitivity as well for time of day, knowing, um, how important it is to have all of you here as well. From the college, the cabinet, staff, um, faculty, everybody. And so, um, an awareness around that so that we can make sure that we are taking it all into consideration. And so, um, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments on timing. Janine?
No, just that, you know, at this point I'm retired and so, um, you know, if, if it makes a time shift, makes it more convenient for, for others. I'm a hundred percent behind that. So it's not an issue for me to change it.
Jean?
I would just say that any concerns I would have would not be relevant anyways in my short-term position.
Thank you. Go ahead, Heidi.
I was going to say to, um, think about everyone here who like to be here and we'd like to see you. What time would work for you, Chris? I mean, if we started the work session at three, would that work and then go into the board meeting? I mean, I'm not sure. What are you thinking?
I, you know, like, not to give an exact time because I'd like to have that be, you know, part of the conversation, but I think 2:00, 2:30, 3:00 PM would be helpful for me so I could have like a morning to do other, other things, but I also want to recognize and, and share the importance of transition time to that. Um, and so knowing that we already have like the next few months kind of scheduled out, um, those times are already set on my calendar. So I'm open to maintaining this and, um, seeing what happens also.
Kind of looking at the amount of time when we schedule, um, both from a work session and knowing some of our days get very long. We can have some pretty lengthy, um, conversation, I think, doing that in the afternoon, um, of the 2:00 or 2:30. I'm going to look to Dr. B as well.
Thank you. Um, so I would like to speak for the college that's behind me as well. We are here to serve you. This is your board meeting. And we appreciate you considering us as the audience and being available and so forth. However, we are here at your leisure and as your, at your pleasure. So whatever time you decide, we will make it work.
Thank you. Jerry?
I would just add from staff perspective as well, uh, not only just reiterating what Dr. B just said, but also appreciating Chris, the, the appreciation for that transition time to be able to kind of work that out. So I appreciate you being able to make it work for the next few months and that gives staff time to make sure we can rework this and it works for all teams involved. So thank you so much for that.
When we look at the timeframe, it can be up to upwards of three to four hours, um, in your duration, sometimes longer. Typically the four-hour mark depends on again, agenda and what we have going on. And so, um, I don't, I would love to propose if the 2:00, 2:30 works for a start time, then that would get us in the evening. We still have enough time in the evening without going into the wee hour. So.
Yes, I wonder if we think almost backwards and say, we typically end about this. It's about how many, you know? And so maybe we wouldn't want to be here any later than six or, you know, thinking about it that way. And or keeping, um, staff to, to be beyond six, I think.
We can adjust too with the meal and I mean, I think there's some additional things we can look at through how we set up the agenda and the pieces. But I, I'm going to throw it out just with the two o'clock. I want to make sure that works and that that would feel comfortable.
Yes, that would work for me.
Two. But we can bump. That's why I want to give it out is what's, what's the comfortable being able to, um, be here? Because I think it's important to make sure that we accommodate, um, that time piece as well as the awareness of how late we go. And I'm fine with either. I don't, I mean, I don't have a preference. I think if we can stay in that earlier, you know, 2:00, 2:30, 3:00 at the very latest, because that could put us into eight o'clock. And, you know, we've had a few meetings that have gone longer than that. So.
2:00 PM would work fine for me.
Great. Any other discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjust our meeting schedule with clarification. Do we need a motion?
But no, what, since we have kind of the rest of the semester planned out already and those times still work for, for Chris, which thank you, um, for that update. I will bring it as normal on, on the calendar to the October for Work Session and then November for Action for the Board for next year's calendar, uh, for Board Meeting. So.
Let me just clarify though, sorry. Um, there's four months left as far as this year.
Right.
And so, or four, three meetings, three more meetings. Um, are you good till the end of the year? Okay. I was under the understanding it was through like October. So.
Yeah. So, so yes, if trustee Garcia is good for the rest of the year, then we can run it through the normal schedule, October Work Session, November Meeting with these adjusted times and, and things like that, if that truly works. So.
Yeah, these meetings are on my calendar, on my schedule. I was just saying, moving forward.
Yeah.
If there could be a conversation around moving the time.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Wonderful. Any other discussion from today? Anything that we can improve, where we want to make comment recognitions, anything else for the day? Go ahead, Heidi.
I just want to appreciate everyone's work and time and effort into everything that they're doing to prepare us for what the year ahead will look like. And, um, welcome everyone back. And I'm excited to see what happens each month, the progress. And I appreciate the fact that you all realize that we've done so much and there's always more to improve. So. Thank you for everything you guys are doing. So.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a comment?
Um, I just want to say that, um, I spent 15 years working in higher education. Um, and so I know the, the passion and the care and the excitement that comes with, um, all of the new things and all of the existing things that you all are working on. Um, and so I just want to, you know, share appreciation and care for that. And also just share that like, I, I read the 125 pages of this packet. And ever since I've talked about, like, started just my journey on this board, every time I talk about AIMS, I smile. And I think that y'all should be so proud of that because it is incredible the amount of stuff that's happening on this campus. And it really does feel like a hidden gem because there are so many things that I didn't know that were happening on this campus. Um, and that were happening for our community, um, through this campus. And so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Bet. So I have three takeaways. One is AIMS isn't just affordable. It's a great college. Um, and student success is evident. I put down, um, in the numbers of students that graduate, earn certificates and are gainfully employed. So that's going to be my message out to the community. The second one was it was evident in all that we got today. The other is that all decisions are made with a lot of forethought, information, data. And the third is that, um, there is just, it's so evident, you know, reading everything that, um, AIMS has this amazing culture of continual improvement. And, um, I just, you know, so I feel very proud to be on this board and to be able to be an ambassador in the community and be able to make sure that we raise that, Zach. The number of people that know more just that, oh yeah, that's what's out there on 20th Street or Windsor or in Fort Lepton. And so, um, I think that's really important. So those are my key takeaways. Everything you presented today was absolutely phenomenal. Um, so thank you for all your hard work.
Any other comments? I would just say, I don't think you guys missed a beat. I'm not sure that you took any time off, although I know of a couple of trips that people took. You guys continue to do amazing work and so I want to thank you as well. So, any other comments? Did I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Jean. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Janine. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Thank you.